The March 18th, 2019, meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners will come to order. First, we will have the invocation and pledge by Commissioner Jimmy Keith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we could all please stand. Lord bless us this evening, this body, and each of the citizens of our great county, as we do your bidding tonight and make decisions that we believe are in the best interest of our entire community. Please remember our military, our first responders, and all our public servants as we go forward each and every day. Bless our families, our friends, and again, our whole community. In their name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Do you want me to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I'd like to introduce our youth council members. Diana Page, raise your hand, babe. Thank you. And James Jensen, thank you. Both are from Pan Forest High School. Thank you for joining us this evening. And I need to recognize the 71st High School Future Business Leaders of America, FBLA, and their advisor and their teacher, Mr. Stanley Ford. Would the members please stand? Where's Mr. Ford? And the members stand and be recognized. Do you have T-shirts for all of us? Thank you so much for joining us this evening and welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Madam Chair, I'll get my picture.
Oh, okay.
The reincarnation of J.L. Dawkins right now.
Lord have mercy. They are not, students, they are not as well behaved as you are, some of them. We will start with the future business leaders. Come on, gotta get a photo. And then we'll go back and get the FBLA leaders. Now come back in. Come back in. Come back in. You all have a copy of your pledge and your creed? Would you, y'all, slide down about two inches for me? Okay, thank you. And pardon me? You will do the pledge again?
No, they're...
Oh, your pledge. All right, let's take the picture, the photo. Thank you. Go to the microphone, please, and do your pledge and... And the creed. Thank you.
We are going to do the pledge of FBLA and part of our mission as well in the town we start. And I have these to prepare for this. However, we will do the pledge on three, one.
I solemnly promise to uphold the aims and responsibilities of future business leaders of America for how to lead and live, and as an active member, I will strive to develop the qualities necessary in becoming a responsible business leader.
Thank you, Board of Commissioners, for allowing this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Thank you so much. Now may I have Diana Page and James Jensen? Come shake your hands all around. Get ready for a photo op. Oh, somebody was late. Oh, I... There are two graduates from Pan Forest and then come back. Yeah, looks like it.
It's her nephew and Kathy's daughter.
What's that down there?
We want with the whole board waiting.
You gonna say it in front of them?
No, he's just kidding. He's just gonna get you in trouble.
Don't listen to your uncle, I tell you.
There you go. Very good. Move on back. I'm gonna get all kinds of photo ops tonight, buddy.
I guess she did. Madam Clerk, did you assign someone to do the wrestling?
Did you?
Mr. Evans.
She didn't.
She didn't? I thought you had to meet. All right. I don't see. I do see. This evening, I also have the pleasure of introducing the 71st High School Future Business Leaders of Amer... Wait a minute. I just did that.
Yeah.
Why'd you ask me that? Why did you point that to me? It's the honorary FBLA member, Commissioner Charles Evans. Come on down, Mr. Evans.
That's you, man.
That is a good picture, Charles.
You won't ask that question again, will you?
I am so proud to make this recognition. Which way is the camera? Okay. I'd like to recognize Commissioner Charles Evans, who recently completed the Advanced Leadership Core Training that is offered annually to county and municipal elected officials by the School of Government at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. Commissioner Evans was one of 23 elected leaders to complete the five-day program, which is part of the local academies sponsored by the School of Government, the Association of County Commissioners, and the North Carolina League of Municipalities. The training was held at the Carolina Inn in Chapel Hill. Not a bad place to... The leadership program was created in 2013 to help city and county elected officials understand the broader challenges of governing in today's environment, to enable them to build their personal leadership abilities and to give them an opportunity to act collaboratively. More than 80 municipal and county elected officials from across the state, across our state, have completed the program since its inception. Mr. Evans is the only person who is a member of the Cumberland County Board of... Sorry about that. Board of Commissioners to complete this program. So we are very proud and honored to have him, to have him here tonight. He has promised to give me a refresher course in leadership skills. We are starting it in April, on April Fool's Day. I want to present to him this certificate of appreciation of completion. It says, "Charles Evans, having successfully completed the course of instruction in Advanced Leadership Core, is awarded this certificate." And it was awarded on Friday, February 15th of the year 2019. We are extremely proud of him to be our first. And when I am elected again, I'm going, okay? It's a good thing to do. And we are proud that you represent us as a graduate, as a graduate. Come on, stand in the middle of all, in front of Glenn.
Jump up at the last second, right there.
I can't.
Don't hide your neck.
Now you gonna hide mine. Got us all. Thank you, Charles. He blocked him. That is an accomplishment because it is a rigorous, rigorous course of study. Now if I can find my agenda. You've got some wrestlers in the audience?
All right. There we go.
Who's doing that?
Mr. Keith is already down there.
Huck Hogan. That's what he's... Not me, man.
Hey, good evening. You know, today we're gonna talk about some individuals who, you know, met adversity, fortitude. Sometimes when people told them that they couldn't get where they wanted to be, they continued on. Enough about politics. Well, we're gonna talk a little bit more about some really remarkable kids here in our community. This time, if I can bring Jared in Dallas, can you come up? Come on, come on over here. All right, Kay Fears representing the House, Cole Pride. All right, for those of you guys who don't know this, you're looking at two state champions. Both from Kay Fears. Kay Fears Wrestling. Now Dallas here is a junior and a two-time state champion already. So his sophomore and junior year, he's won the state at 138 pounds. What you don't know is that's where Commissioner Adams used to compete at 138 pounds. But now he's gone to a different level.
That was until he got his other leg.
Jared participated at 170 pound and won the state championship. To do what these guys have done at such a high level is remarkable, and we are very, very proud of them as a county for the representation they get. But not only that, I'm gonna take away a little bit from you guys, that the Kay Fears Wrestling Program had a great year, too. And they finished second in the state, but I believe they brought seven wrestlers to the state championship. That's an impressive thing, and Coach, appreciate it. I know I got a proud grandfather over there, Mr. Wilson. There, you're looking good. But let me just say that is Lee... There you are. Didn't recognize you over there, Lee. Lee Spruill, the principal.
Athletic director.
And athletic director.
Over there. He's over there.
All right. Here, you're from Kay Fears High School. Thanks for all your support of these. Coach, thank you very much for your support. And I know each of you couldn't have done it without your families and the support of your classmates. But at this time, I just wanted to recognize those, to make sure that people know that there's a lot of good things. There's a lot of great young people coming out of Cumberland County. And they know what it takes to sacrifice. They know what it takes to have discipline, and they know what it takes to win. And we're real proud of you, Dallas. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Jared, either of y'all like to say anything?
Principal and athletic director and the coach.
Okay. We need pictures, honey. Photo op. Photo op. Hello, how are you? Hey, how you doing? Hello, how you doing? Wait a minute, photo op. You got grandparents, did it say? Oh, we're... Take one. Take one, and then we'll take parents and grand...
All right, everybody look up. Okay, hold on a second. Okay, yes, I think I can. Everybody look up. Hang on, let me... More.
And he's an Eagle Scout.
Who's an Eagle Scout?
Jared's an Eagle Scout.
What don't you could have done that? Is Mr. Bell here?
Yes, he is. He is.
Mr. Bell, could you join me at the podium, please? I'm gonna try to read this with my glasses on. Nope, I better not. It gives me great pleasure to recognize Christopher Todd Bell, who began work with Cumberland County in July of 1984. Todd retired in October 2018 from the central maintenance facility, where he served as a fleet maintenance technician. For 34 years, two months, Todd worked to ensure the county's vehicles operated properly. In addition to his work with the county, Todd served in the Air Force Reserves for 30 years. Thank you for your service, sir. His hobbies include NASCAR, and he has been a local blackwell racing team member for six years. On behalf of the board, I thank you for your many years of service to Cumberland County and hope you enjoy a long and healthy retirement. And I would like to present you with this flag, sir, that is presented to Christopher Todd Bell, Cumberland County Central Maintenance, in recognition of outstanding service to the citizens of Cumberland County, July 16, 1984, July 16, 1984, to October 1st, 2018, from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners.
It was my pleasure working with the county. I met a lot of good people. A lot of them come and go. But it was my pleasure working with them, because you learn a lot of people from different people. And I'd just like to thank y'all for recognizing me.
May I have... Oh, I'm sorry. Future business leaders, get ready. Some more of you came in.
I do, we want to go get out.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Yeah, that's right, at least.
Come on.
Don't leave that.
All of you, come on. I'm hoping to meet you for tonight. Come on.
No, you can't leave. We'll get another picture.
Yes. They, some of them encountered difficulty in getting here, so... Really appreciate the students. Come on, walk up, walk up, walk up.
Might have to have two rows.
Come on, come on. Go over the ground. Come on, tighten up like your family.
I can see everybody. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Okay. You got them all. Okay.
We're gonna use that for 15 minutes behind me.
I know. I just, I hate to see those kids head. Catch a ride. Now, I'll go to Madam Manager.
Yes, ma'am. The next item on the agenda is your monthly public comment period. This is an opportunity for the citizens to share comments with the Board of Commissioners. The public comment period shall last no longer than 15 minutes. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes. We are asking each speaker, as they address the board, to please begin their remarks by stating their name and their address. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We have two speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Mr. Wayne D.
Okay. Mr. D., good evening.
Evening, Board members. My name is Wayne. My last name is D.
Push your microphone up just a little bit.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Wayne. My last name is D. I live at 5022 Summer Ridge Road. I come here today for transparency, clarification, and education. I'm a recalcitrant by nature, and I forewarn this board that I am livid with what I have witnessed my entire existence regarding the actions of those appointed and not appointed to serve in positions of power to better our community, state, and our country. I am tired of the tyranny and corruption that has gone on from the lowest to the highest levels of government. How is it beneficial to be in debt? As this body is aware, a general obligation bond is issued with a quote, "belief" that a municipality will be able to repay its debt obligation through taxation or revenue from projects. How much credit do we have in this municipality? What is our limit? How much of this so-called credit is owed? Currently, Cumberland County, North Carolina, owes a non-general obligation of almost $85 million, which this body authorized. Hence the word "non." When is this set to be paid in full? What is the interest rate you negotiated? Where does the money come from? Who can explain what I have noticed in the last 10 years of being a tenant of this county? We can call that a resident, we can call it a property owner. But at the end of the day, when I have to continue paying taxes until the day I die on property, I've already paid three times the amount for. That's called extortion. Now, considering in 2009, we had an increase of 1.86 percent. 2010, an increase of 3.79 percent. 2011, we had a decrease of 2.05 percent. A steady zero increase from 2012, 2013, and 2014. Then we had in 2015... Then we had, in 2015, a 2.9 percent increase. Then in 2016, we had a .5 percent, that's a half a percent, increase with a reevaluation of minus six percent on ninety... Thanks for your time.
Thank you for joining us.
I'll be here next month.
Our next speaker...
Same time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chief District Court Judge Robert Steele.
Good evening, Judge.
Good evening, everyone. Robert Steele, 117 Dix Street. Madam Chair, Commissioners, privileged to be with you. The numbers for 2019 February of our courthouse, fifty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-two citizens came through the doors. Scheduled for your hearings, precisely eighteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-seven cases. As you know, some of them literally take ten seconds to a minute. If it's a traffic ticket, others are two-day-long custody cases or week-long murder trials. I want to compliment our Sheriff's Department. Last month, they did a very good job keeping us safe. There were two guns, two tasers, two-hundred-and-sixty-three knives that were seized at the entranceways to the courthouse. So, with that, your jail numbers ran... February 25th was a high of seven-twenty. Today was the low since we last met of six-hundred-and-fifty-five. Total capacity of that jail is built for eight-fourteen. I want to share with you, when someone is convicted, I can assess them a sixty-eight-dollar fee as part of their cost of court for every day they're in jail. The real numbers to house them are about... run approximately ninety dollars per inmate. So when you talk about reducing the number in the jail by fifty, think in terms of five thousand dollars a day. Most of the people in our local jail are significantly in pre-trial confinement, meaning you're innocent until proven guilty. So you can't just lump the cost of doing business on whoever and all who are in the jail. So, our DA's office has done a very good job of monitoring these numbers, and we've done our part in trying to keep them in proper balance. Meaning, you don't ever know who you modify a bond on is gonna get out and pose a threat to the public. You don't ever know those with serious charges, quite honestly, that are gonna get out and never be a problem. So there is a bit of an art to what we do, and we're privileged to do it for you. Lastly, to point out, it was 2015. I think everybody on this board unanimously voted and adopted the stepping up initiative, which is to identify the mental health needs of the community where those affected are intersecting with the criminal justice system, namely these people in the jail that we're talking about. On the 28th and 29th, I know an invitation's been extended. I would ask you personally all to attend, not the full day Thursday, half a day Friday, but at the very least, find an hour, a half hour, a portion of a day. I know many of you may have other plans, but certainly in those two days, try to squeak it in. Because I think that'll give you some insight as to what we are dealing with in the court system, but more importantly, where public taxpayers are going when it comes to mental health, jail, and safety of the community. Thank you all very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you for joining us.
There are no further speakers?
Thank you. There are no changes to the agenda?
Would you approve the agenda?
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and second questions? If not, those in favor?
Unanimous?
Thank you. Are there items to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes. Madam Chair, I would like to pull item I.
All right, there's another one? Mr. Boos?
And Madam Chair, I'd like to pull item D. Two D.
Two... D.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. If there are no other items to be pulled, may I have a motion, please?
Move for the approval of the consent agenda? Without pulling those two items?
With the exception of D and I, all right? Those in favor?
Unanimous?
Thank you. Let's look at item... I.
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair, first. This one just gave me some concern as we get ready to go into budget season. And I think that if we're gonna do that, it actually ought to go through the budget process in order to be able to make sure. I see that it talked about lapped salaries, but that would take care of it through whatever period of time through this year. But then after that, there will be benefits as... and that increased salary that's not into the budget and would have to be into the budget. I believe that that ought to be done in the budget season. That's what gives me the biggest problem. I think that the manager should be able to identify those funds to be able to do that. If this board is inclined to fund this position from a part-time to a full-time with those lapped salaries, it would be... I think the Sheriff's Office needs to identify the funds within their budget to be able to carry that on through the next year. So unless somebody has some questions for me or the manager, I have a motion that I'd like to make in this particular case, but I will leave that to... If anybody has any questions or comments.
Are there questions? Comments?
I have a question or a comment. Was this position not a full-time position before it became a part-time position?
I believe... yes, sir. It was a full-time position when it was created many years ago, probably ten to twelve years ago. It was downgraded to a part-time position to meet the needs of the Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Wright has now asked that the position be funded at a full-time position.
Administrative... It's an administrative coordinator, one position. Is all I know, that's what it reads into the budget. It's just that, in terms of creating new positions, it gets to the point, if every department here comes in a little bit before the budget season and asks to use some lap funds to create a position, they're actually creating a position for the budget later on that's already in the budget that we end up having to fund. And I think you ought to go through that budget process. So I would move to approve the part-time to a full-time, give him his full-time position, and fund through the lapped salaries for the remainder of the current fiscal year. But the Sheriff's Office needs to identify funds within their current budget to fund the increase for the next year. Well, in other words, that means what I'm asking is that it would not automatically increase the Sheriff's Office budget allocation for next year. So they'd have to find it within their budget.
Are there questions? All right. There's a motion and a second?
I'm sorry, I can't find my button.
Okay, I probably have...
I know I have a button somewhere. Okay, so Glenn, if I understand you right, you want to go ahead and fund it through the end of the year, but make the budget responsible for the next year.
It's budget... whatever he has in his allocation, yeah. Because if he needs it, you know, I'm not gonna stop him.
I just want to know, is funded through the end of the year?
Yes.
Based on what you're...
Well, yeah, through his lapped salaries. He's doing lapped salaries through... So that doesn't bother the budget, because he's doing the lapped salaries. But he needs to identify those going on within his budget.
And converts it from part-time to full-time?
Yes.
All right.
Gives him his position.
Seeing no further notifications, we will proceed to vote. Those in favor of the motion?
That is unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item D.
Madam Chair, that was mine. When this agenda came out, that's the first I had seen it. So I went back and I looked in our notes from the agenda session. And although that was long, this wasn't on there. And this is, I think, kind of a little dangerous to start having a letter from one person jump to the consent agenda and then get put forward on naming property, naming roads, naming bridges. Because otherwise, it would have just been approved through the consent agenda. And I pulled part of the packet there. And as on there, there's a... Either we or the requesting party has to pay a $2,000 application administrative fee. So it doesn't say who's paying it. It just says it needs to be paid. And at some point, there's gonna be some letters of recommendation made a part of the packet, but it's not a part of the packet we have now. So... I would...
I can't pull it up.
So I just took it off the consent agenda because it hadn't been consented to by anybody that I know of. It's the county commissioner.
I can't pull it. Are there questions or comments? I don't know whether or not I can legally call on you to speak. I don't know, Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Danny Devine.
Danny Devine. He is a former state representative. And Mr. Tippett, of course, is a former DOT. Board member.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I share your concerns. We have letters from former Governor James Hunt, former Senator Tony Rand, or Senator Tony Rand, the president of Methodist College, Representative Norwood Bryan, all in support of this. And the family is to take care of the $2,000 that costs to do all the administrative work. I worked with Secretary Tippett. He served eight years. And he got the funding for that 295 by getting him and Tony Rand, got a bill introduced, and changed the trust fund to include Fayetteville in the loops. And I was there, right in on the front line with them. They caught a lot of heat from Charlotte, Greensboro, and other cities because they didn't want to be reaching that fund. So I would appreciate your support. It's a very deserving... He worked hard for this area. And I do... I'm sorry I didn't send you the letters. I thought maybe Mr. Strickland, he's worked with Department of Transportation. But we do have letters from all those people. That's one of the requirements, to have to have those letters, to submit to DOT. And we do have those letters. And this resolution is one of the things that they also require. And I appreciate your support.
All right. Are there other questions? If... All right, you've had a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
And second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Of this one? And I'd ask...
I think it was not the person. It was just that we didn't discuss...
It came in here with everything that you see on that page and a half. We discussed for about four hours, except for that one item. So I think it's the process. I'm not in favor of consented items coming in from letters. You know, so...
Thank you so much for your work. And thank you for coming and sharing with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We've had motions on the consent agenda, and then I and D.
Madam Chair, we are at item number three, which is our public hearings. We'll begin with our uncontested rezoning case, and that is case P-1909. I'll ask our interim planning director, Mr. Joel Strickland, to present this case, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Case... Excuse me, case P-1909 is rezoning of 1.44 acres from R6A Residential CU Conditional Use Overlay District to allow the placement of a recreational vehicle in approved manufactured home park to CP Plan Commercial or to a more restrictive zoning district located on the west side of Legion Road, north of Pioneer Drive, submitted by S. Hutton Fulton III on behalf of ZV Pate and Alex T. Keith. The current use of the property is a single-family dwelling and manufactured home park. The property does have PWC water, septic for sewer. We can go through the slides. You see the surrounding properties. There's some single-family residential, some commercial immediately adjacent to the property, item three there. Some more commercial across the street. A little bit of institutional on each side. And then a little bit of multifamily residential. Here's an aerial of the subject property outlined in blue. Here's a hydro soils map, no issues there. There you can see the water coming in along Legion Road. And then here's some pictures of the property. Here is the subject property. Here's the north view looking down Legion Road. The east view looking across. The south view looking back down Legion Road. The planning board unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning at their February 19th, 2019 meeting.
All right. Thank you. Are there questions? Mr. Boos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The picture of the single wad that was up there, is that on the property now?
It is.
Is that going to be removed? Or is that what they're asking to place? Is that what they're calling the RV? Or is they asking to place that? Or is that gonna be moved?
The plan is for everything to be removed and it become commercial. The adjacent property owner has purchased the property?
So the small rectangular below has purchased the larger one? This one?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right, what is your pleasure with this case? I need to open the public hearing. Are there speakers?
We have one speaker in favor, Mr. Alex Keith. We have no speakers in opposition.
All right, then in that case, we don't. Do we need to recognize him?
He said he didn't want to speak. Did you say he didn't want to speak, sir? You don't have...
Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Give me a motion, please.
Madam Chair, in the case of P-19-09, I move that we approve the rezoning from R6A Residential/Conditional Use Overlay District to allow the placement of recreational vehicle in approved manufactured mobile home to CP Plan Commercial and find that this recommendation is consistent with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan of 2013, which calls for heavy commercial at this location. CP Plan Commercial is classified as heavy commercial zoning district. And further find approval of the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the district requested is in harmony with surrounding zoning and existing land uses.
Those in favor?
Unanimous?
Thank you. Case... P-1835. I will...
Yes, ma'am. Case P-1835 is the rezoning of 21.56 acres from Plan Institutional MP to CP Plan Commercial or to a more restrictive zoning district located on both sides of Lazy Acres Street, which is east of Claude Lee Road, submitted by John Lee Fred Lee Jr. and James Lee and James C. Robinson. The applicant has modified the request to RR Rural Residential Conditioning/Conditional Zoning for recreational vehicle park and/or campground. The current use of the property is vacant. There is well and septic on the property. It is... In the 2030 Growth Vision Plan, listed as urban in the South Central Land Use Plan for airport-oriented uses. for airport-oriented uses. You can see here, the surrounding land uses. There's a couple of double-wide, single-family residential on the property, or in the surrounding area. A little bit of commercial there with the HSP, a little bit of institutional there with the MA, and then the purple is industrial. Here's the aerial of the property. Here's the hydro soils map, a little bit of hydro soils to the very northern portion of the property. See, the water is out on Claude Lee Road, it doesn't go all the way back to the subject property. Here's a site plan of what is proposed on the property. Here is the east view looking toward the subject property and looking toward Lazy Acres Road. Some more pictures of the subject property. Here's the south view looking down Claude Lee Road. West view from Claude Lee Road. And the north view looking down Claude Lee Road. At the planning board meeting, it was unanimously recommended denial of the rezoning request from MP Plan Industrial to RR Rural Residential CD Conditional Zoning.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing.
Madam Chair, could I ask a question before we have a public hearing?
All right.
Mr. Strickland?
Yes, sir.
I think, in reading the minutes of this, I got a headache.
I mean, yeah, I think you got to get, you got to give some background on what was happening.
There was a number of site plans, there was a number of different discussions about it, and it seemed to me that at the end of it, there seemed to be some confusion about whether or not an adjusted site plan was submitted or wasn't. And at one time, the airport director, the applicant thought it was okay. The airport director said, "No, I didn't say that." I mean, I think you really got to give us some background on this.
Sure, there was a, there was a substantial amount of dialogue between the airport and the applicant. Going back, and I'll give you the whole timeline if you'd like that, Mr. Keith. Going back, December 11th, staff originally recommended denial of the request. It went to planning board first on December 18th. Planning board deferred the case to February to give the applicant more time to work on the site. In January, January 3rd, the applicant sent his revised plan to Mr. Whited at the airport for him to review. January 9th, Mr. Whited replied to Mr. Robinson's email with an alternate site plan. Staff then sent the revised plan submitted by Mr. Robinson to Mr. Whited for comment in middle of January. Toward late January, Mr. Whited replied to the staff's request for comment with a new design that he would have recommended. And there was some dialogue again between Mr. Robinson and Mr. Whited on if he was interested in actually meeting those recommendations by the airport. So, it came back to staff in February, on February 12th. Staff continued to recommend denial of the request. It went, or February 19th, staff received a letter from the airport opposing the case, and Cumberland County Joint Planning then also recommended denial of the request on February 19th, the planning board did. So, that gives, there's been a lot of dialogue between Mr. Robinson and the airport, going back and forth on what, what the airport would recommend and what Mr. Robinson has drawn up on his site plan. Does that help some?
Still a little muddy, still a little muddy. When you say staff recommended denial? Do y'all sit around a table and take a vote, or?
We do.
Really? What if you don't agree with it?
It's, it's the majority of the board.
But you're the director. But you're the director.
Sure.
So, if you think it's okay, and the rest of the board thinks it's okay, it doesn't pass?
I need to, I guess I would need to convince the rest of the staff that it's okay.
As the director? Interesting. Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Booz.
All right. I was following along pretty well until you said that there was a follow-up, and that Mr. Whited sent plans that he would prefer, and the applicant was asked would he adhere to them, and he said yes. And then it seems to have just kind of fallen off whether those plans were then the applicant's request, or did anyone look at what Whited sent?
He did, and the issue, Mr. Robinson...
Was that voted on? Was Whited's plan voted on?
No. No, Mr. Robinson stayed with his same site plan. Every time he submits, it's a $300 fee for him. So, he stayed with his same site plan to staff. Is that correct? For the surveyor, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted, it seemed like they were doing what they should do, which is to try to hash it out and come up with something that everybody can live with, and it sounded like they did. And so, then that, then they said, well, then they turned down Robinson's plan. Well, Robinson had agreed to the Whited plan, and so I didn't know where the Whited plan that everybody agreed to fell off the table. And that making any sense?
Might be in the public hearing, it might be...
And I wouldn't necessarily say Mr. Robinson agreed to Mr. Whited's plan, Mr. Booz, it was just presented to Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Adams?
Yes. I just couldn't get any clarification, and I think I know why they were asking. But the road, whether it was private, public, who's going to maintain it? Who's going to maintain it after this? Reading the minutes, I got no clear... You know, one time it was judicial that, yeah, there was something, we went to court, then the other one says, "Well, I got to maintain it a little bit, but the neighbors got to maintain it." I never did get any clarification on that part. I mean, if you, I mean, and you know, if it's not a DOT road, and it's going to be a private road, somebody's got to maintain that, and...
That's right, and it's not, it's a, it's not an approved street, and it's not a platted street. So, yeah, it's, it would be up to the owner to maintain the road.
So, when all these folk move back there and they don't take care of this road, they're going to be standing there, where you standing, and fighting us about why we can't fix that road?
They can make that fight, it's, it's the property owner's road.
I understand that, but once they move back there, I understand what's going to happen. They're coming to this board as to why did y'all allow us to move back here? We didn't know this road wasn't going to be maintained, and there's no clear, in terms of me looking at that, regardless of the airport part, I guess, we never got anything from the city as to any of their elected officials about the issue on that. But it does give me some concerns, that's going to be a major problem. And it's no water, I mean, it's no water?
No water.
No water, and no sewer?
It's well and septic, yes, sir.
And can put how many back there? If it perps, I guess? That's okay if you can, I mean, it's going to be a number of them.
Okay.
It's going to be a major.
Let's... Mr. Booz?
Yeah, if, if the plan, whatever it is, tonight gets turned down, when's the next that he can bring in the Whited plan? Or then when's the next time he can bring in something to try to...
He would have to wait a year to bring something back to the board.
All right. If there's no other objection, I'm going to open the public hearing on case P-1835. Are there speakers?
We have two speakers this evening, two in favor and one opposed. Our first speaker in favor is Mr. James Robinson.
Good evening, I'm Greg Whitley. If it pleased the board, Mr. Robinson signed up before me. I represent the petitioners, including Mr. Robinson, so if the board wouldn't mind me speaking first, and then you may follow up with a couple of things, if that's okay. Again, my name is Greg...
Without objection.
I'm sorry. Again, my name is Greg Whitley, my address is 131 South Cool Springs Street. I provided the end of last week a spiral binder to everyone, hopefully with just some excerpts, some maps, and pictures of the property and things like that, to kind of address what's been discussed here before the public hearing was opened up. I did not represent the petitioners at the hearing before the planning boards. I understand Commissioner Keith's confusion. I read through the minutes, I was equally confused. What I have learned from my clients is that there were some misunderstandings. My client initially submitted the plan that you all have seen. Under tab five of this binder is a letter that Mr. Whited sent to the planning board along with his proposal for something that, that my clients wanted the impression he would agree to, which shows the RV sites on the eastern half of that property, so that as far away as possible from, from where the runway is and all of that. And so, my client, Mr. Robinson, indicated, and it seemed to be the case, that he would have agreed and was happy to do that. He was just, as was mentioned, he was paying a bunch of money to a surveyor and engineer going back and forth, changing plans. So, he was certainly happy to do whatever work for everyone, instead of having all of these on the north side, to move them to the east side. And we're talking about 54 sites. You do that over about half of this 10 acres, that's 5.4 sites per acre. To the question of water and sewer, Mr. Robinson runs an existing campground on the northeast side here of where this property is, is the current campground. And you can see, there's an aerial in, under tab one in this binder. Mr. Robinson runs an existing campground there. He's run it for some, he and his wife have run it for some years now. They've done a very good job of it, they've had success, and that's part of why they would like to expand, to be able to continue growing their business. Looking, and again, I'm kind of trying to address some of the concerns here, but basically, as you all can look and see, under tabs two and three, whether this conflicts with airport-oriented uses in the South Central Land Use Plan, the, excuse me, the county zoning ordinance addresses the airport impact zones, and tab three has a map of the impact zones. Basically, those call for residential development of anywhere from 25 to 100 people per acre. We're talking about a max of probably 10 to 20 people per acre, and you can see that I've highlighted some of that. But I don't think that it conflicts with the area. You'll see the pictures of the existing campground in there, that we leave a bunch of trees up. It's not anything that my client is going to come in and change the nature of the area. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Are there questions?
Mr. Whitley, the road, I'm just trying to get some clarification on the road.
Yes, Commissioner, so right now, as it's been addressed, my client does maintain it, and Mr. Robinson can actually probably speak better. I think years ago, actually, a matter went to the North Carolina Court of Appeals to establish that there was access to the parcel where the campground is on now, and then that, the access traverses the subject parcel that we're all here looking at. So, there is, per the North Carolina Court of Appeals, there is access. Now, I understand, once you get, and as you saw from the pictures, where Lazy Acres Road comes off, or street comes off of Claude Lee Road, there's pavement that extends probably 100 yards, then it goes to sand. Two things on that, on the, if I can find it here. On the FAMPO Highway Plan, Lazy Acres Street is listed as an urban collector's street. So, it's certainly been envisioned that this is going to become a county road. Again, as the board is well aware, the urban collector's streets provide land access service, serve ingress and egress functions, may be transitional from rural to city traffic. So, this road has been identified, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to note that this road has been identified as an urban collector's street under FAMPO plan.
But it's got to be brought up to standards before it can even be done that. And the other part was probably because it was landlocked, so it was just access, but didn't identify a road. It says you did have, probably had, because I was reading through that, have some access, but it doesn't necessarily say this was the road. I guess that's what they had been using. And so, there's no DOT or county, anybody that's going to maintain that, it's going to be the owner of the, of the property.
Yes, sir, and as I mentioned, Mr. Robinson uses it now for his campground, and just from a pure business owner standpoint, it's good for business for him to have a good road. Folks, and as you will see in some of the pictures there, folks come into the, it's, it's, there aren't permanent residences, there are, you know, travel trailers, RVs, but folks bring some big, some pretty big vehicles in there. Mr. Robinson maintains this road, maintains the area, as you can see, and it, obviously, it doesn't do anything for his business to, to let the road fall apart. And so, I believe he's done a good job, as you can see from the pictures, of maintaining the road, and I believe, anticipate that one day it will be addressed, you know, as is laid out in the FAMPO plan.
I'm good.
He's good. Mr. Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Whitley. The, on the, on the graph up there, I don't know if you can see right there, that, that is owned by Mr. Robinson right now?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, and is the road that's going down split, does it wrap around, and is that how he gets access to that place?
Yes, sir, absolutely, sir. The, as the board can see, the road comes in at the corner of the subject parcel, but yeah, also, that's kind of the corner of the campground, that's where the, the camp...
So, he's using that road now without any problems for his existing campground?
Yes, sir, absolutely, and he...
So, he wants to use the same entrance road?
Absolutely, he in fact keeps it up for that, that's the, that's the only ingress and egress to the campground now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Our next speaker is in opposition, Mr. Gerald Newton.
Good evening, my name is Jerry Newton. I'm the City of Fayetteville Development Services Director. I'm here on behalf of the City of Fayetteville, as the airport director is out of town. The Cumberland County Zoning Ordinance provides wording as to when an approval of development under the airport impact zone can occur. That's in Article 8. The guidance involves three provisions to consider an approval. The first one is control of the uses compatible with the airport. The second is consistency with the off-airport land use plan. And the third is a favorable recommendation by the airport director. You should have received a letter from dated March 13th of 2019, last week, from the airport director remaining in opposition. The current FAMPO aviation element provides guidance that matches the county zoning ordinance regarding how to review development proposals. While that's not an ordinance, that does, the FAMPO element does bear weight on federal and then state pass-through funds on transportation, including aviation. Petitions for rezoning of properties located within the airport impact zone should not be favorably considered except when airport-compatible land uses and densities are met. Second provision of the land use plan, as already noted, the proposal is located in the county's airport overlay district. Plant expansion lies directly beside Airport Runway 4 Approach and Runway 22 Departure Zones. The locate, the location is not consistent with a FAMPO aviation plan, which calls for prohibiting this activity under and near critical approach departure zones. The proposal is not consistent with the adopted 2015 South Central Land Use Plan, which calls for airport-oriented uses, and a campground is not a compatible airport-oriented use. The proposal, the proposed underlying, underlying district of rural residential is for areas where public water and sewer are not possible, and yet residential development is encouraged. That is not the case here, where the airport overlay discourages residential use at this location. The airport director is on record and continues to be on record as opposing the use as being incompatible with the airport operation. Therefore, as the proposal is, does not meet any of the three standards of your ordinance, the City of Fayetteville as an adjoining property owner and owner of the airport, and the Fayetteville Regional Airport Director respectfully requests the rezoning of rural residential conditional zoning be denied by the county commissioners as recommended by the county planning staff and Cumberland County Joint Planning Board. Thank you.
Are there questions?
I do have a question. Will you state your name again, please?
Newton. Gerald Newton.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. The letter from Mr. Whi, are we pronouncing it right, is it Whited or Whited? The letter from Mr. Whi, are we pronouncing it right, is it Whitede or Whitede?
He goes by both, and he hasn't corrected me on each when I've tried. I call him Brad.
Thank you. The airport director provided us with a letter, and in it, he indicated that the petitioner did not follow his recommendation. He, Mr. Whitede or Whitede had provided a possible alternative, that if he had followed, it appears from the letter, that the airport director would have gone along with that. I don't know that to be the case. But he, he says in his letter, and I'll quote from it, "Mr. Robinson decided to submit his revised, excuse me, revised plan without my suggested alterations." And then, another paragraph about the asset value and so forth, then he says, "Therefore, I remain opposed to any expansion of the RV part." But I'm confused by the letter in that it sort of implies in the first paragraph that he may have been okay with it, had he gone along with Mr. Whitede's recommendations.
Is it okay to, should I direct questions or answers to you, and then back, or?
So, really, my question is, and I think we've got another speaker here, do we not? We had three speakers? We've heard two.
The property owner yielded.
Deferred, deferred, okay, got it. So, I don't know if there's not some room for some compromise here. That's what I'm, I'm inferring from his letter that there's room for compromise.
Yeah. The information that you provided is not the same as the one that I'm looking at dated March 13th of 2019, today, Cumberland County.
I'm sorry, I've got a letter from February 19th. Is there an additional letter?
Yes, there was one sent on March 13th that I was referring to.
Okay, do we not have that?
I don't have that.
We do not have the March 13th letter.
I have mine that I was going to, should I end it?
Let me.
Let him pass that to us, we'll read that.
Yeah. Would you pass that to us? Pass that down, please.
Yeah, our letter's dated February 19th.
When he found out he couldn't be here for this important meeting, he asked that I would come on behalf of the city.
Sure, and we appreciate it.
Provided that information last Wednesday or Thursday.
That was my concern also, was that, was this sentence. He decided to submit it without the suggested alteration, so.
I'll pass it down. It's the same letter, but he just takes out the whole first paragraph. That's what happens.
It's the same letter?
Almost, he just takes out that whole part about, I would agree to it.
It was no longer conditional opposition, it was a straight opposition, because it's not compatible land use to the airport.
I'm not willing to work with you anymore, it's just no, seems to be what it says.
Okay.
My responsibility as airport director is to protect.
All right. Right. That answers it. As soon as everyone has a chance to look at that, is the property owner present, or is there any information, any additional information needed before I close the public hearing?
The owners, Mr. Robinson, who are seeking to purchase the property, are present if the board would like to hear Mr. Robinson.
What is the pleasure of the board, please?
Madam Chair, I thought that what happened is that Mr. Whitley just wanted to flip-flop how they were going to speak. Is that not what I thought? That's what I understood.
That's correct, and.
Not that he was yielding it to them, that they were just going to flip-flop, Mr. Whitley would go first, and the landowner would go second, that's what I thought.
And I thought, since it went so long that he had given his time, I'm sorry. Let's, I am in error. So, let's hear from the property owner now, please.
Thank you very much.
I never saw the one Mr. Whitede had sent the planning department, the drawing he said if, that he made and turned everything sideways here, and I would have more than gladly cooperated with him. If I'd have known that's what he wanted, I would have had it done. As far as long-term, the road and long-term people living back there, these are people in RVs, most 60 to 70% of my business is people coming here to visit people that are either being deployed or returning from being deployed. They're visiting people stationed here in the military. So, if this was, I finally got this from the planning department, Mr. Whitede never sent this to me, and I would gladly comply with it if that's what he wants me to do.
Oh, I understand, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have two commissioners who wish to speak, and then I'm going to suggest something. Mr. Keith?
Thank you. Property owner, could you, sorry, I didn't mean, I was trying to get you where you didn't sit. Thanks. Are, in your RV part, your existing one and in the proposed one, is there any permanent residents in those?
There is only one permanent residence on the property, and that is mine.
Okay.
There are no other permanent residents there.
So, do you have a, like, how long would someone be able to stay on the property?
I've had several of the people that are stationed here actually buy RVs, and they use their off-base housing. I've had some of them stay for two, two and a half years.
Oh, okay, so, although not permanent, they are long-term.
They stay there to not uproot their family. They get sent here for training or whatever, and so, they use the off-base housing, and they get to keep what's left.
Yeah, I got you. Okay.
They're all officers.
You know, I'm at a, this is a tough one for me, because as you can imagine by reading the information and, you know, reviewing the property and everything, there's a lot of unanswered questions. What I don't want to do is penalize you of not being able to come back for an entire year if there is some compromise. I thought, when I was looking at the letters, going back and forth, there may have just been some missed opportunities for compromise, but I'm not so sure I'm hearing that right now. I believe that there is an opposition that is, that is opposed at a very high level, and not willing for compromise, from the one letter to the next letter. So, I'm going to see how the rest of the debate goes, and we'll go from there.
All right. I'm going to recognize Mr. Adams next, Mr. Evans, and then I'm recognizing myself. Mr. Adams, please.
Madam Chair, I will tell you that I think the property owner, when he stands up and says he's willing to do whatever it takes, and I heard the attorney say that he wasn't in early on during the situation with the planning board. I think that if he's going to retain Mr. Whitley, who can have some conversations between the city, the airport, you know, I think that is, with the confusion with the letters and all of this, that he shouldn't be penalized, he should go back to the planning board, they should have an opportunity to at least air this out. I just think that that's, you know, for another year for him to come back, that's just too long. I'm not going to make that a motion, because I see Mr. Evans wants to speak, but I think it ought to be sent back in here, without having to pay a whole lot for another site and survey and all of that. I have problems with leading somebody down the path that I'm willing to work with you, then all of a sudden, I pull the rug out in front of you and say, no. I just, that's just, I just, so, that would be my.
Thank you. Wait a minute. Mr. Keith, did I not?
Ma'am, I'm off.
You're off, all right. Mr. Evans, and then me. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I heard what Commissioner Adams said, and I want to make sure that I have some clarity on this. At this, at one point, before the letter was revised, it was, it was talking about you working with the director of the airport, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that, at some point, what he asked you to do is to get the revision to him, and it wasn't gotten, right?
He sent it to the planning board and told me he sent me a copy. I never got it.
Okay, okay. And also, from that letter that we heard, I believe that the airport director was willing to work with him. Am I correct in saying that? So, my suggestion would be that those two individuals re-meet and come up with a plan that's going to be suitable for both of you.
Yes, sir.
And then come back to our board. I think that would be much better than going back to, well, yeah, going to, yeah. Okay, thank you, sir. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Now, I'm recognizing myself. Usually, when the planning board and planning staff agree, when I have questions, I, you know, after having studied the material, I will go with those, that recommendation. But I'm hearing three of you now say that you're unclear, and you want to, more information. So, I'm going to move that we have 60 days to clarify. Is that what you're doing?
Yes, that, for them to have a conversation.
For the two of them to have that conversation and to sign off with the city, the airport, and Mr. Rob, is it Mr. Robinson?
And just to be clear, you want it to go back to the planning board, correct?
I don't want it necessarily want it to, I just heard three of our members say that they did not have enough information. I was going to make a motion to deny. So, I'll hold that.
I think it has to go somewhere. I mean, if we just say, go talk, then it gets lost in the grand scheme of things. I think there has to be a place for it, the land and the neutral arbitrator or whatever, but I think staff is there to work with these folks.
Sure.
To be able to, whatever happens, and you all can then come back to us or whatever with the staff view, but it has to land somewhere. I don't think it could just.
That's why I suggested a number of days.
That's right. I agree with that.
A timeframe.
Madam Chair, you could recess this hearing to the appropriate meeting in, this is, April May, if you're 60 days, the, whatever, the second meeting in May, with direction that the parties bring back further evidence on the issue of whether the compromise can be made, and if you still have questions about the street. I mean, there's some legal documents that could be provided.
May 20th.
All right, May 20th, which is in the middle of our budget season. That's my motion. Did you get it? Thank you.
So, May 20th?
May 20th meeting.
Okay.
And I, public hearing is closed.
Until May 20th.
Until May 20th.
And now, I make my motion. May 20th, and I had a second.
Yes. I have discussion.
Got discussion. Mike was, it touched me first.
My light's on.
His light's on, yours is not. Okay.
Madam Chair, thank you, thank you. I just want to be clear that the intent of this motion is so that the parties can get together and compromise can be made, satisfactory to the airport, you know, and I feel like it can be, because the first letter implied that it could have been, and when no communication was made between the owner and the airport director as to the original, as to the plan of the airport director, he proceeded as he needed to do, you know, and I respect that and I understand that. But it looks like to me that compromise would have been in order if the communication had taken place. That's why it's so confusing to everybody. I just want it clear that that's the intent of it, is to get the airport director in agreement and to sign off on this, because frankly, if he does not, then I won't be inclined to vote for it in the future either, if there's that much objection about the airport.
Mr. Keith?
Real quick, thank you, Madam Chair, and I do want to appreciate, I don't know if Mr. Newton is still here, but thank you, thank you for coming in, giving us a city, we are partners, the lands are contiguous, and, you know, if there is room, great, but you're doing a great job with planning at the city, and I know you're looking out for the best interest of the airport and city and everything else, so hopefully, there is something here, at least we can look back on it in 60 days.
Is it fair for me to just anticipate that we would get a signed agreement from the three parties, or the two?
I think with you stating that, it would be fair now.
All right. I want it stated that way. That is my intention, that I want the property owner, the airport director, and the planning director, city, please, on one communication. All right, those in?
One communication. One communication, but I don't really think you'd have the planning director signing off on an agreement, that'd be between the parties.
Just the two parties, that's right, okay. I didn't mean to say that.
I didn't think you did.
I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to say that. I meant to imply that, but I didn't mean to say it out loud. All right, that sounds good to me. Those in favor?
That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's next, P?
1850.
Case P 1850 is a rezoning of .47 acres from A1 Agricultural to R6A Residential, or to a more restrictive zoning district located at 315 John B. Carter Road, submitted by Mary Kay Whitede, Brenda Williams, Deborah Wright, Della W. Perkins, and Betty James on behalf of Lily Mae Whitede heirs. The current use of the property is a single-family dwelling. There is PWC water, but there is septic on the property also. When you look at the surrounding land use here, it's mainly residential, so a couple of double wides there and a few single wides in the area. There's also a church. Here's an aerial of the subject property outlined in blue. No hydrolic soils on the property. There's water running down John B. Carter Road. Here's a picture of the subject property, additional. Here's the south view down John B. Carter Road, the west view looking across John B. Carter Road, and the north view looking down John B. Carter Road. This case was originally denied by staff. It went to the planning board, and planning board gave the applicant more time to try to get, try to work with the health department and see if she could get a second septic unit on the property. There's already a dwelling on the property, and she wants to move a second dwelling onto the property. So, she wasn't able to get that from the health department at this time, because they couldn't locate the old sewer system. So, they recommended that she get the zoning first, and then work with them on trying to find out if they could get two sewer, two sewer, sewage systems on the property. So, it came back to planning board, and planning board at that time unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning under the premise that she will, of course, be required to get approval from the Cumberland County Environmental Health concerning the private septic tanks as part of their group development review.
Thank you. Mr. Drick, I'm a little confused. On the, on the documentation that we have, it's asking for rezoning from, wait a minute.
A1.
Yeah, A1, right. And then, okay. So, R6A is probably the most liberal building zoning that we have. You could put pretty much anything on it, right?
Sure.
You could put trailer park, well, whatever. And are we only doing this because she wants to be able to put an RV on there?
No, it's not an RV, it's a, I believe it's a manufactured home, mobile home.
Okay, on 1.44 acres?
.47 acres.
.47 acres.
Yes, sir.
So, otherwise, on half an acre, she couldn't, she has to go to that zone.
That's right. That's correct.
But, but she.
Yeah, for the second unit.
But she could put. But she could put five trailers on that afterwards.
I don't see this.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Where's this case? All right, Mr. Booth.
No, that's okay, that's what I was.
Okay.
I'm just kind of confused again. I get confused easy, I guess. Maybe I'm confused with the health department. As to why, they would tell me, "I can't find it, go rezone it, then I'll go find it." I don't understand why, and I know I got an interim health department director, maybe he wasn't over there with the, dealing with the septic tanks and stuff. But I just don't understand how, why you would do that before rezoning the prop. I mean, I just don't, I just can't get.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It was to do a perk test on the property commissioner Adams. I may have misstated that, I apologize.
Okay, so did it perk? It's a yea or nay if it did it perk or not? If it doesn't perk, you just can't put it there.
Right, they haven't done the test yet. Is that correct?
And why not? I mean, I just don't understand why you wouldn't see if it, if it, I mean, there's already one out there. And I mean.
The, 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 they used to have two dwellings on that property.
Say what now?
They used to have two dwellings on that property originally, back about 10 years ago. The mobile home that was on in the back was removed. The planning board sent them back to get a, tell the department to find the two septic tanks on the property to evaluate, see if they can be reused. They could not find the septic tanks, so they said you'd have to do a perk test, put a new one on there. And it says it was going to be $400 to have them do, test the site. He sent me test the site for location. They didn't want to have her go around and start testing site locations without knowing she's going to get the zoning in place to allow the second unit in the first place. So they suggested to her to come back.
Okay, so the first, there's a unit on there, and we don't know where the septic tank is and whether it works. Is that what you're telling me?
There's supposed to be, there's supposed to be a second unit out there, yes, a second tank. And they couldn't find it.
Did they find the other one? That's, that, there's a.
They couldn't find either one of them.
So is anybody in the property that's out there?
There's a house out there right now. It's.
Is it occupied?
But the health department could not find it.
It's occupied?
Yes. And they want to put a second one on for the, I think it's the mother, I think, that wants to be back there.
And there's water across the street. I guess people don't want to tap on it. The tap fee's too high. It says water down the road, just.
Well, I mean, she'd have to, she's right across the street.
Yeah.
They're going to tie into the public water. They just want to put a separate tank in the, or they don't have.
They're going to tie into the water?
No, they're going to tie into the water. They'll be required in the group development to tie into it. They just want to have sewer to tie into it.
Right.
And I think the main thing is that they're trying to just get that, if you wanted to tie into the existing tank that was out there, but they could not ever, I guess, find it and stuff, is the main issue. And they just want to be able to try to, see if they can, in the group development review, you would have to get approval. Because when you're taking a unit out, they have to go through development review, and that would be required to have the health department to approve a septic tank on that site. That's why the planning board said they were recommending approval of it. Under the location criteria for R6A, it requires you to have both water and sewer available to give that type zoning and stuff. That's why planning staff recommend denial.
So you're supposed to have it before you get it rezoned?
Well, that's a criteria that we look for to recommend approval for, you know, going for that lower density or that higher density.
Are we consistent with that all across the county?
Generally, we try to go down from a higher, a lower density to a higher one. If you said that location criteria recommends denial for that, we don't have the water and sewer available and stuff like that.
Are we consistent with that throughout the county?
Well, pretty much, yes.
Okay, that's all I'm going to.
So. The planning board was just trying to give them a possible option. If they got the zoning to R6, and if they didn't get the septic tank approval, they still have the one house out there and stuff, so.
All right.
Yeah, the question's. I'm going to open the public hearing.
Okay.
You, Keefe. Ms. Keefe.
I know you're frustrated, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
This may be a little unorthodox, but could we, if we were to approve this, could we make it conditional upon a valid septic tank?
No, because it's not a conditional zoning.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Keefe, the protection for that is they couldn't issue a building permit if they were not a valid septic tank.
But, but the zoning stays with the land. Yeah, so once you get the zoning, you can't go back on it.
All right. No more questions? Then I'm going to open the public hearing.
We have one speaker in favor, Mary Whited.
Is it Whited or Whited? Whited.
She know her name.
Okay. Please come up. We're sorry that you've had such a tough time with the.
Yeah, because hurricane. France had tore my place up, and so I couldn't buy a trailer and pay lot space, too. So I've been putting it on my mother's land. And they do have a septic tank back there because the people that was living there before, they done moved out. So the septic tank is there. And every time I called the separate man to take and come check on it, he said he had to go out of town. And then I called Mr. Oxbox and talked to him about it because nobody living in the house. And I saw the septic tank is free. There's nobody, because I told Reggie to come out and pump the septic tank out and do the lines so Oxbox could inspect it. But he told me he'll call me, but he hasn't got in touch with me yet. But I need somewhere to put my trailer because I can't pay both house note and lot space, too. Because I was living in that trailer where I was living for 26 years to Fran tow it up. And so I need somewhere to go now. And PWC is the water line because my mother had water hooked up with PWC. PWC is out there. And the septic is out there, too.
Okay. Are there, hold it one minute, let's see if there are questions. Are there questions for Ms. Whited? All right, so it's a matter of the $400 fee.
The matter is that Reggie come out and make the septic tank available for Mr. Oxbox. The plant, what you call it?
Health department.
Health department to come inspect it, to put health proof on it.
That's right.
That's what I'm waiting on now.
Someone from the health department?
Yeah, Oxbox. He, he's.
Oxbox?
Osmo.
It's Osmo.
Osmo's supposed to come out and inspect it.
I'm sorry.
We got you.
I'm sorry, we understand.
He's our soil scientist at the.
Do we have those names? Mr. Interim Health Director.
I know to whom she's referring, yes, ma'am.
You can help?
Yes, I'm going to do some investigation on that.
You say Whited and I say White.
Oh. Thank you. If you would do some investigation on that. In that case, do we vote or do we wait till we get the information? Oh, I didn't see Mr. Evans.
Well, I was trying to wait for you to close the public hearing, Madam Chair.
I just closed.
Okay, I would like to move that we approve this for this, for this family.
Second, okay.
All right. I'll carry the motion. About any other questions or discussion? Those in favor?
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That hurricane missed you, but.
You need her.
The next case, Madam Chair, is P 1905.
Yes, ma'am. Case P 1905 is the rezoning of 1.5 acres from R10 residential to C2P planned service and retail district, excuse me, CZ conditional zoning for trades contractor activities to a more restrictive zoning district located on the northwest side of US Highway 301 South, north of Brooklyn Circle, submitted by Timothy B. Evans. There is PWC water in the area with septic. And we'll go through the pictures. You can see the surrounding land use. There is some commercial in the area, some professional, some residential, single-family residential also surrounding the area. Here's the subject property outlined in blue. No issues with hydrolic soils on the property. There's the water access from PWC along Highway 301 and along Brooklyn Circle. Here's the site plan submitted by Mr. Evans. And then here's the subject property. This is the north view looking down Gillespie Street 301. East view looking across 301, across Gillespie Street. And then the south view looking down Gillespie Street 301. Here's the subject property from Brooklyn Circle. The east view from Brooklyn Circle. And the south view from Brooklyn Circle. And here's the west view. At the February 19th, or at the February 19th planning board meeting, planning board recommended denial of the rezoning from R10 residential to C2P planned service and retail district conditional zoning, which staff had also recommended denial. The, the current use of the property is vacant. And the 2030 growth vision plan showed it urban, and the Southwest Cumberland land use plan 2013 showed it as low-density residential.
Are there questions? No questions. Mr. Keefe.
Yes, Mr. Strickland. Were you at the meeting when the planning staff voted on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I've got two questions. Again, I'm going to go back to when your staff votes on that. Would you mind telling me who's involved in that voting process?
Yeah, each section of the planning staff has, or each section of the planning department has staff at the meeting. So comprehensive planning is there, land use codes is there, graphics is there, transportation is there. And we all sit around a table and make our recommendations.
Do you have to have a quorum to do that, or are you just whoever shows up?
No, it's whoever shows up.
Okay. Well, speaking of whoever shows up, I noticed the, the vote. Do I read this right, that there were only five people that voted and three people abstained? Or three people were, five people were at the meeting and three people abstained?
That's for planning board. There were eight at planning board, five voted and three did not vote.
Five, okay. It didn't say how many voted in favor, but three voted. So five voted for the denial.
Correct.
And three voted, three did not vote.
That's correct.
How can you not vote? What is the prerequisite, Mr. Attorney?
For the planning board, if they had been involved in the process, knew the property and some, had some connection with the project typically.
Okay.
I mean, that's kind of a stretch. Three of them had done that, but.
Well, yeah. Okay, so it was five to oh, but three not voting?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Are there additional questions? Seeing none, I'm going to open the public hearing.
We have one speaker in favor, two speakers in opposition. In favor is Mr. Tim Evans.
Madam Chair, county commissioners and staff, my name is Tim Evans. Longleaf Properties, 4239 Cameron Road, which fronts 301 by 500 feet. Before my time starts, can I get clarification on the vote? I was in there. Now, three voted in favor for me and two, the three, the, 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 the one that asked for denial in a second, that's two. Three voted for me and three didn't vote.
I voted denial.
Okay, are you positive on that? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, my fault. Okay. When this was brought before the staff, I called Joel after I was called and asked could I meet with him? And he said, "Sure, Tim." And I went to his office and we had a lengthy conversation considering the turnover that has happened with staff. He agreed to ride out to 301 with me and look at this property. 20,000 cars a day growing because of Gray's Creek's growth from bypass 162 down to the 59 bypass has 10 major heavy commercial pieces. My piece borders a heavy commercial piece. If we get into the thick of it, the land use plan and the land use policy plan has many recommendations in it that support commercial on this corridor. I got frustrated in the planning board because none of these were brought before the planning board. Only the map that shows low density from this land use plan. That same land use plan, we can check the facts. It also says this area is in need of more study. Now, guys, I'm going to shorten this. I really am. I'm frustrated. So here's what I'm going to ask the staff in here tonight and my county commissioners and Madam Chair. So let's assume that I would decide, I represent nine builders. Let's assume that I would decide to build houses there. The current zoning at R10, I can put 19 to 20 houses, even go into the flood plain and leave the county the 50 buffer they want. I can get 27 manufactured homes there. Here's the big thing. Y'all know I'm frustrated, I am to no end. If I go build houses there with a heavy commercial beside of me, my opposition tonight is the heavy commercial. If you look across the street at the end of 2017, you see the C1P there that was recommended, approved. No buffer. Right there, C1P, it was approved beside of residential with no buffer. Two weeks ago, the staff calls me. Madam Chair, may I finish?
Your sentence.
Okay. Two weeks ago, staff calls me and they approve a piece within two tenths of a mile that I'm having contract on now, my company, for approval. 3.7, okay? For approval with no buffers. How could I tell a homeowner that if they buy this house, heavy commercial, meaning a food line could come tomorrow? I don't see how this is for houses. Thank you. I'm open for questions.
Thank you.
Whoa.
Would you change this map back to where? I'm asking Mr. Strickland or whoever. Scotty, yes. Oh. Wait a minute.
I'm leaving 500 feet to the creek.
Madam Chair, can I have a, ask Mr. Evans a question?
Yes.
How many houses you say you can build on that property?
Right now, all the soils are good. Mike acre went all the way to the creek. Right now, with the R10 zoning, Ed's here. Okay, all this is from the county. Everything I got's from the county.
Just how many?
19 to 20 homes.
On one and a half acres?
Three, I own three and a half acres.
Okay, we're talking about one and a half acres.
I'm leaving the rest of it, all that.
Okay, all right. It's one and a half acres that we're looking at.
And if I do it all, 27 of them.
Okay, I got you. All right, thank you.
Okay. Let me see. Are there any other speakers?
Yes, we have two speakers in opposition.
All right.
Our first speaker in opposition is Mr. Kenneth Bowers. What?
Oh, we brought a slideshow on memory stick, but we found out that it has to be emailed and they're worried about a virus on the memory stick.
I spoke with the ICE Director, Keith Todd, and he gave us permission, but it was my understanding through the process, you guys would have to okay it and then I could leave the presentation.
We would have to okay it?
I think Mr. Moorefield suggested that the board would need to approve whether the speaker could show the slideshow. Is, am I correct, Mr. Moorefield?
I did not know that they had not got it cleared for viruses and stuff beforehand.
Right.
It is.
How, what is the length of the slideshow?
There, there's a total of, I believe, 15 slides, but we're not going to have to look at every one of them. We're just going to highlight the key ones because we only have three minutes. And I'm going to stick to my time.
All right.
I appreciate you hearing this.
I'm going to give you an extra minute.
Thank you, ma'am.
Because I gave the speaker ahead.
Thank you very much.
Extra minute. Without objection. Okay.
You in charge.
You in charge.
I didn't even think about looking.
Oh, my name is Ken Bowers. I reside at 146 Tom Strawn Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28306. Our presentation is to state our objective and to call up the facts that support that The surrounding residents and my wife and myself oppose the changing of the zoning because it's not compatible or complementary to the surrounding property or with the current zoning that's in force at this time. Also, we'd asked that the board uphold the decision of the zoning, of the Planning Board to not change the zoning of P-1905. These are the summary of the facts. The key one to me, because I did a little map study from Google Maps and the map we received from the county, if you go out three quarters of a mile from the property in question and look at the dwellings, the properties there, roughly 83% are zoned for residential. The breakdown for hospitality is two. There are approximately eight churches and two municipal zoned properties within three quarters of a mile of the property in question. So there's our case right there. We're a residential area. Even though 301 runs through it, lots of folks live there. There's the map I used. Well, that's, that's, we'll save the rest of the slides for my wife, but, and I won't say anymore because I don't want to create any confusion because we stated our objective. The facts are there that support our objective and you've got the graphic that supports that objective. So thank you for my time.
All right. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ann Bowers.
It's Ann Bowers, okay. Thank you. Hold up the mic.
Is that okay?
Okay. My name's Ann Bowers and I reside at 146 Tom Strawn Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28306. I'd like to just point out a couple of things. From the summation from the Planning Board, if you look at the second page, one of the things that I thought that Ms. Hall made an excellent point on was that she asked Mr. Evans at that meeting about what his intentions were with the property. And I don't want to read all that out to you. I know you can, but you can see that he said that he has no immediate plans for it. He's talking about building a 1,600 to 1,700 square foot building, but as he shared with my mother and I, he said he has no money at this time, so he doesn't know when he's going to build the building. My issue about trade contractors, that's a very diverse. You don't know exactly what that's going to be. So we have major concern. Our business has been in operation since May of 1970 and we have to concern ourselves with our guests and making sure that there's no noise that's going to create problems from them. And if you look at the draft that was submitted over on page three, you'll see at number 26, we're going to fall under just the noise regulation where we're going to have to call the Sheriff's Department if we're having a problem with beep, beep, beep backing up. You'll also look at number 24 and you'll see that he's asking to not have a loading dock put on the schematic diagram or propose that at this time. So I don't understand really how you don't want to have the loading dock, you don't know what it's going to be, you don't know when you're going to build it, but yet we're having to come here and defend our property to ensure that our customers continue to have a nice, quiet place to stay. There was an accusation made about you don't know what kind of neighbors you have next door. I can verify that we have professional people that stay with us. If you've been to the Lowe's and Hope Meals, if you've been to the neighborhood Walmart on Legion Road, and even at Cape Fear Valley Hospital anytime recently, supervisors that stayed with us, built those facilities, put new roofs on Cape Fear Valley, and we do have high-level professionals that stay with us, that are also putting money back into the local economy. And my concern is we keep our place nice and clean. And if you look, this is the property next to us. It's never been cleaned. You see their campers, they're within 25 feet of this. These are some other properties of Mr. Evans. And the reason I'm showing this was the accusation was made about what kind of people we have staying with us. And I just want you to understand that we take pride and we're concerned about what goes on at our property. And I assure you that safety is also an issue. And if there's anything you'd like to ask me, I'd just like to say that we appreciate Ms. Hall making the comment that across the road it can stay commercial, but where we are, it needs to stay residential for not just us, but all the people.
All right. What kind of business do you have?
We have campground.
Did you show a picture of it?
Uh, no, ma'am. My husband accidentally forgot to put it in at the end, but I didn't want to overwhelm you with slides too.
Okay. And how close is your campground?
Yeah, it shows.
How close is our campground to the property? Actually, to the property line, you're looking within about 25 to 30 feet.
Okay.
Yes, I'm on both sides. Where the campground sits.
All right. Are there questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And we appreciate you letting us do the slideshow. Thank you.
All right. Are there other speakers?
There are no further speakers.
Then I'm going to close. You got a question?
Not yet.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
No.
Mr. Fairclough.
I would ask Ms. Bowers, if you see the map that's up there now, could you point out your place on that map?
Could you say?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yes, sir. The HSP, we are classified as hospitality and always have been.
H S?
HSP.
Hospitality.
Actually, Highway Services.
Okay.
What was that?
You are Spring Valley.
Highway Services?
Yes, ma'am.
HSP stands for what?
Highway Services Plan.
Highway Services Plan. What is that?
It follows the same things CP's only district, some of the uses.
CP?
Now it does, yes. It used to be for areas around interchanges originally, for hotels, RV parks and things like that, what it was originally designed for.
It's commercial.
Well, now it is. In 2005, they made it just be the same, it's following the same requirements as CP now. It's just like CP.
Okay.
So it's across from commercial, beside a campground?
No, the campground is not commercial to you.
It's actually commercial.
Yeah.
There's our department over there.
I don't know what C2P is.
All right.
What's, what's the building down there in the right-hand corner? Yes.
That is the HGR.
I'll tell you.
Right-hand corner with the, be a fine. They're just above them.
Okay, thank you.
Did I see a single what, a single dwelling there?
A double wide out there. In the houses, that'll be one of the single houses.
Okay. All right. What is your pleasure?
Madam Chair, a question for the.
Mr. Keith?
Thank you. Ms. Strickland?
Yes, sir.
You, you had mentioned that that HSP, if that sort of designation were to come up today, that would be C1P?
CP.
CP.
Be similar to CP, yes, sir.
And the applicant is requesting C2P.
Correct.
What is the major difference between C1P and C2P?
Yeah, one's just more light commercial versus heavy commercial.
C2P being heavy commercial?
CP would be the heavy commercial.
So C2P has a more restrictive zoning than CP?
Correct.
Um, are there other questions?
Is it closed?
Didn't I close the public hearing?
Yes, you did.
I closed it.
Okay. Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I would like to make the motion that we approve the zoning.
I'll second the motion.
All right, you have a motion? Approve the motion.
To approve the zoning or approve the?
Approve the zoning.
Approve the zoning or approve the recommendation?
Approve the recommendation.
I withdraw my second.
The recommendation, deny. No, no, we don't want that one.
That's what I said.
Yes. No, I don't want that.
You're going to approve the zoning and deny the recommendation?
Yes.
I'll restore my second.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good Lord. Yes.
R-10 Residential to C2P.
All right. Approve the requested zoning, all right? Other questions?
Do everybody understand what I was saying?
All right. We've got to have some different language, Mr. Evans.
And we need to make sure that we approve it with the conditions.
Mr. Evans, the motion would be to approve the rezoning from R-10.
Residential to C2P Plan Service.
Plan Services.
And you find it to be consistent, which plan is it? I got to jump out. The Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan 2013.
Correct.
Which calls for low-density residential at this location and for the fact that the zoning is reasonable in the public interest because of the.
Because of the existing commercial, heavy commercial adjacent to it on the, which side is that? Is that north side?
The HSP's north, yes.
And the, that is also a commercial zoning immediately across the street, is it not?
Correct.
Hand beside it.
Let me, um.
The reason to find it's consistent is because it's consistent with the area, which is, it is basically, but it's on a north by heavy commercial and immediately across the street is another C1P. Is that just CP?
CP, correct. And there is C1P also.
Is that, is that your motion?
That's the motion.
I'll second that. I've already seconded it. Oh, Marshall, second that.
Been moved and seconded. I don't think I can allow you to speak unless one of these, one of the commissioners has a question at this point, because I closed the public hearing. Mr. Evans?
No, that was his motion.
Oh, no, ma'am, I'm done.
Was the motion seconded by Commissioner Fairclough? Yes, sir.
Two seconds, there was a motion and a second. But we've already closed the public hearing. So I can't do that at this time. Unless there's a question, and I don't see one. Those in favor of the motion?
That is unanimous. Pose. All right. Thank you. Item number four, Madam Chairs, are items of business. 4A is consideration of resolution to lease certain property to the Vision Resource Center. Our Assistant County Manager, Tracy Jackson, will present this item.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This audience is back for you for final approval. It has been advertised as required. And as mentioned in the memo, there's a monthly rent of $200. Utilities will be included in the rent. And if there's no further questions or I can answer questions, be glad to try to answer questions.
All right. Thank you. I don't think we have any. If I could find my place.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to be made at this point for this, since there's no questions?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I would like, okay. See, you're going to be, okay. Shut up.
All right.
Just want to approve, Madam Chair.
Second.
For the center of the block.
For the Vision Resource Center?
Yes.
Second.
As a motion.
Can you have a question or second?
A motion and a second.
I just have a question.
Question, Mr. Boots.
Do they still want to do this?
Yes.
Very much so.
You don't want to find you something closer?
She said she'd take this until we got her something closer.
Okay.
That's what she said.
And she gave a great speech at church on Sunday. She was a Woman's Day speaker too. She did an excellent job.
I just, we're trying to get you a spot, but that's out in the Boonies.
Okay, we are still looking for.
All right. I know, take what you get, okay, all right.
I'm going to, okay. Those in favor? Unanimous?
Because she says she wants it.
Congratulations.
Item 4B is consideration of interlocal agreement with the City of Fayetteville for a joint contract for ASAP to PSAP alarms, alarm software.
So, good evening. So this, this software would actually allow an alarm company, an approved alarm company, an authorized alarm company, direct access into our computerated dispatch system where now it is a physical phone call, a handoff, if you will, by phone, back and forth between 911 Centers and our alarm companies that, that work throughout Cumberland County and the City of Fayetteville. So this is a joint effort between the city and county using the shared computerated dispatch system that we already have in place. It is basically an add-on piece of software that will allow for electronic communication back and forth between alarm companies, thereby saving time when it comes to dispatching alarms and getting information about alarms. So that could be fire, burglar, those types of things. So we are asking for approval.
I move a through to interlocal call sharing agreement with the City of Fayetteville for the ASAP to the PSAP software.
All right. Other questions? Seeing none, those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C is consideration of the proposed schedule for fiscal year 2020 work sessions and the budget public hearing. So tonight, for your consideration and review, we have laid out a proposed schedule based upon this schedule. Based upon this schedule, the budget presentation or the manager's recommended budget would be presented Thursday, May 30th, at 7:00 PM. And then following that presentation, the board would hold several work sessions. Monday, June 3rd, Tuesday, June 4th. We would have a public hearing on Monday, June 10th and then a final work session on June 11th. So this is proposed for your consideration.
Madam Chair, I would, even though she got us doing it back-to-back Monday, Tuesday on that 30th and 4th, I'd move to adopt the schedule for the FY '20 budget work session.
Second.
Public hearing is recommended.
Second.
Or modified.
Mr. Fairclough?
I have a question. What is the date? And I'm looking it up and I can't get the calendar to do anything but get in my way here. But what is the date of the second Monday of May?
The what now? Second Monday of what?
Second Monday in May?
Yeah. I may have it in a minute.
In May?
Yeah.
The May 11th?
That's the second Monday.
No, the 13th is the second.
Second. You said second Monday?
Okay.
In May?
It's the 11th.
It's too far away from the 30th.
I'm in the wrong month. The 13th.
It's the 13th.
I was trying to get May.
It's the 13th.
I was in March.
That's the first, that's the first second Monday. You know what I meant? I meant the second meeting.
Second meeting is May 20th.
The 20th. Okay. Is that too far away from May 30th to present the budget that night?
I'm not sure we'll be ready. We can try if the board...
I'm just trying to save a day. But, you know, it's on, it's three.
Oh, so you don't have to come to it.
I'm just trying to think about if we could save a day. Those meetings are very short.
If that's the board's desire, then we'll meet that date.
What now?
If that's your desire, we'll do our best to meet that date. I prefer the 30th.
And I would, the 20th is not good for me. I'll be coming back in for my daughter's graduation in Atlanta, so I may not even be at that board meeting that night. So I have to leave it on the 30th.
Yeah, it's too far away. It's 10 days. I was thinking it was four, five days. It might be. Yeah. That was just a question. It's not a motion.
Let's adopt the budget, I mean, the adopt.
Second. Second then.
Wait a minute. What's the tax rate?
Let's adopt the calendar as presented and have until, if you've got questions or whatever, can you let me know within the next two or three days if there's a problem with your personal schedule so that we can, because we're going to go ahead and publish this, this schedule as it is. Okay? I see nobody worried about it.
I don't remember.
I just thought you were going to vote. There was a motion.
Those in favor of the motion?
Unanimous? Item five are your nominations.
Okay. Item five. Nominations for Cape Fear Valley, Mr. Adams?
Madam Chair, I spoke to each one of the individual. In our imposition, Ms. Murdisworth, she was, completed her first term. She was eligible for reappointment and asked to be reappointed. General Public County Commission appointees is two, Billy King, Warren McDonald. They both completed their first term and eligible for reappointment.
Okay. So nominations for the three. Keith?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to nominate Ms. Tammy Thurman.
Who? Who'd you say?
Tammy.
Tammy Thurman.
Tammy.
She's already on the board. She's already on the hospital board. She's the one that gave the check from Pea Mountain Natural Gas to the foundation.
The $10,000.
Sorry. She was, she was on the applicant list, too.
Yeah.
She's good nominee. But she's already on it. I'll vote for her again.
I think she's doing such a good job. I want to double her up.
That's exactly what I thought you meant. That's good. That's good. Okay. Mr., I don't know which one was first, Evans or Booths?
He can go if you want.
It doesn't matter.
You can go.
Evans?
Okay. I would like to nominate Dr. Daniel Uwe.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Uwe. Mr. Booths?
I'd like to nominate Pamela Sugg Story.
Are there other nominations? If not, we'll go to the next item. Animal Control Board.
Madam Chair, the Animal Board Control, Control Board recommends Charlotte Davis to fill the unexpired term as Mr. Collins resigns.
Okay. Thank you. Any other nominations? We're ready for appointments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the following nominees be appointed by acclamation since there's an equal number of nominees for each opening. For the Transportation Advisory Board, we have nine vacancies. The nominees are Adolphus Thomas, Nedra Rodriguez, Dwayne Beeson, Sr., Terrazine Gardner, Suzanne King, Joel Strickland, Don McNair, Katrina Evans and Niketchi Kamalu. And for the Cumberland County Local Emergency Planning Committee, there are two vacancies. The nominees are Frederick Williams and Ray Jackson.
I'll second that. Okay. Those in favor of the motion? Unanimous? Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Unanimous?
We are.